So, welcome and thank you for attending. Welcome to this extraordinary meeting of the Economic Development and Skills Policy Committee. The meeting today is open to the public, however, we have not received any questions from members of the public today. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There's no fire test planned for today, so if there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. At this point, I'll ask each committee member to introduce themselves. Councillor?
Councillor Jane Dunn.
Hi, Councillor Tom Hent.
Hi, Councillor Minesh Parak.
Councillor Henry Notte.
Councillor Simon Clement-Jones.
Councillor Barbara Masters.
Councillor Ben Niskill.
And I'm Councillor Martin Smith, Chair of the Committee. Apologies for absence, I'm aware that Councillor Crossley can't be with us today and Councillor Clement-Jones is standing in his place. Do we have any other apologies?
No other apologies, thank you Chair.
Okay, thank you. There are no items which require the exclusion of the press. At this point, I ask, are there any members who wish to declare an interest in any of the items of business that we're discussing today? Councillor Dunn.
I have a business in Broomhill which has benefited from one of the schemes, but I did have absolutely no input into the whole consultation process.
Thank you for clarifying that for us, Jane. So, there are no public questions and petitions, so we go straight into the first item on the agenda, which is the month five budget monitoring. I understand, Di, you'll be just taking us through that.
Yes, no problem. Ryan can't be with us today, so I'll just take you through some of the highlights. So, the report brings you a position of month five in this year's budget, it's not about next year's savings, it's where we're up to in this year. It gives you about page and a half of the council's overall position and then the detail with respect to the Skills and Development Committee. I won't go through the corporate position, but on section 1.4.1, it just gives you the details of this committee's spend. The budget for this committee is £11 million, the current outturn is £11.1 million, so there's about £100,000 overspend at the moment, that's in the Street Scene Regulation Events budget, that's caused by a number of costs going up on events and the Euros pressure, but we're trying to mitigate that within the year, so hopefully we'd see that fall in. The proposed pay offer additional pressure has been factored in at month four, so it's still in here, however, a lot of the staff within this directorate are externally funded, so we've been able to charge out a lot of that pay award pressure, so we're mitigating that too. The key budget implementation plan item for this committee was to vacate out of Broad Street West offices, and that has been delivered in advance of the timescales, so we've managed to do a greater saving on that, we're now in Howden House, and the deliberation costs on Broad Street West were less than expected as well, so there's an improvement of £100,000 in the budget this month that you can see as well. If there's any further questions, I can try and answer them now through around our area, or Ryan is happy to answer questions in written as well.
Thank you, Di. Are there any questions? Councillor Masters.
Thank you. Can you just clarify, that £100,000 saving, does it wipe out the potential overspend from the events?
Previously, the pressure was £200,000, so no, it just eases that. Thanks.
Any other questions? Doesn't look like it. Just as a personal comment, you mentioned the events team, and we had that report from the FA yesterday in terms of the amount of economic return to the city from the Women's Euros, which was remarkable, so please give our thanks to the events team for the work they did there, because it made a real boost to the city. Okay, colleagues, so we now move to the main item on the agenda, which is the decision on whether to approve the second round of the Economic Recovery Fund, that's in page 17 of the deck that's in front of us, and I understand that Sarah Lowy Jones, Lowy Jones? Lowy Jones is going to start off by introducing the item. Over to you, Sarah.
Thank you very much, Chair. So, here for you today, we've had the paper in advance, and we've come to present to you on the proposals for the Economic Recovery Fund Round Two. The presentation we'll start with is from the independent research team who have been working over the summer to evaluate the project in its first round of funding, so I'll hear a presentation from them, and then I'll happily talk you through the proposals for Round Two as they are, if that's okay.
Yeah, good afternoon. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Committee. I'm Pat Cooper from Sheffield-based Economic Consultants, Cada Research, and we're here to present our emerging findings from our ERF evaluation. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, as you know, Sheffield City Council launched the ERF in March 2021, a £2 million fund to support high-street recovery in district centres. A large emphasis was placed upon collaboration, local autonomy, local decision-making and creative solutions. Eight successful applicants received up to £50,000 in funds, and seven successful applicants received up to £200,000 in funds. I think it's worth saying that ERF has taken an innovative and unique approach to district high-street recovery, and as far as we can see, there is only one comparable fund across the UK. Next slide, please. Okay, so we were commissioned by the council in mid-July, and the aims were as follows: firstly, to investigate ERF's achievement in terms of key outputs and impacts, to look at what worked well and what elements should be taken forward into future iterations of the fund, to look at areas that maybe didn't work as well and how they could be rectified, and also to look at how the ERF approach can inform future district centre work. Okay, our methodology, there was obviously an inception stage where we came to terms and spoke with the council about our remit, and then we undertook a desecrative view of current intelligence. I think it's very, I think it's very significant and worthwhile to mention that we made a real effort to get out onto the ground and speak to as many people as possible, we conducted 24 stakeholder discussions, and we undertook a primary research with five visits to district centres with the Business Information Officers to speak to as many people as possible. We also undertook an impact assessment, and obviously we're presenting here to you today, we've got an emerging report that will be due in the coming weeks. Okay, thank you. One of the things that we did is we mapped the successful applications across Sheffield onto a map of IMD deprivation rates, although it's not so clear there, you'll see in the report that there is a widespread of applications across many different socio-economic demographics across the city, however, gaps do still exist. Thank you. Okay, we undertook a social value assessment to look at the social value of the interventions for every pound spent, and it came out at a healthy net social return of between £1.99 and £2.24 for every pound spent. Okay, we received a whole variety of different forms of feedback from various different beneficiaries and people living and working in the local communities. I don't have time to look through all those different quotes, they are interspersed across our report, but the overwhelming majority of them were very positive. Okay, this infographic covers many of the interventions that were delivered as part of ERF. As you can see, there's a whole variety of different interventions, I think the ones that really draw your eye towards are the 16 community events that were held, and also the infrastructure improvements that have been made with the ERF with eight new business retail forums either launched or planned. Thank you. Okay, some key findings: ERF has delivered 56 interventions across the city, it's supported communities and built new partnerships, as I said, it's led to the establishment of eight new business forums. Overwhelmingly, the feedback we received was positive from both businesses and communities, who were very positive about the visible improvements they had made to their district centres. They also felt it empowered community and business groups, and this programme was delivered within budget. Okay, and there's also received positive media coverage, which has promoted the game-changing and the unique approach of the fund. Thank you. Okay, the application process, the feedback we received on this. The applicant's expertise, experience, capacity and their local infrastructure were crucial factors in how easy they found the application. The 15 successful applications covered a wide demographic range of communities, although as the map said earlier, highlights that gaps do still exist. Stakeholders would also welcome clearer guidance on what outputs are within scope, but the open nature of the application supported a wide variety of ideas and locally-led ideas. Fostering business community consensus and formulating the application was very reliant on local champions, such as Business Information Officers or one key retailer, and it is noticeable that where this champion did not exist, targeted support was required. Okay, delivery. The project teams and the project leads came from a variety of backgrounds, and numerous delivery approaches were adopted. This was very much reflective of the open nature of the application process. Areas with pre-existing clearly organised community frameworks experienced less initial delivery challenges than areas who needed to establish these new structures. And project management skills, experience and capacity on the ground were the critical success factors in delivering interventions, and where capacity was either missing or stretched, it obviously became more difficult. That was often the case where it was heavily reliant on voluntary, people in a voluntary position. Okay, thank you. Okay, tension occasionally arose between the desire for local autonomy and creative approaches and central council protocols, although it is worth saying that stakeholders did understand the reasoning behind that. But the stakeholders overwhelmingly welcomed the autonomous community delivery model, and that was clear. They were also very, very positive about the support and guidance they received from the central ERF project team, and I think it's really worth pointing out that the Business Information Officers in particular were seen as a clear asset in supporting delivery. Thank you. Okay, the strengths of ERF. Fifteen projects were successfully launched across the city from a starting position of, well, being a unique and first-time project, which is a real achievement, and they're all on track to deliver a variety of well-received outputs. Again, I can't emphasise this enough, that local feedback has been largely very positive, with many welcoming tangible improvements there, high-street, and I think also what many residents were very, and businesses, were clear about is that this was a clear demonstration of the council's commitment to their district centres. The ERF's focus upon autonomy and locally-controlled decision-making was overwhelmingly welcomed, and I thought it's worth pointing out again, this has been achieved within budget. So, ERF Round One has created a clear and large appetite for future iterations of the programme, future iterations that would be, will be very well served from the experiences of Round One in terms of the models and outputs and experiences of the applicants. Okay, thank you. So, emerging conclusions. It's highlighted an uneven picture of local business infrastructure across the city and potential project leads, but it's also shown that with a proactive approach, those gaps can be filled. As I said, delivery capacity is stretched when it relies upon community teams with limited skills and time resources, but those issues can be overcome. Continued outreach work is required, I think, again, almost certainly through the Business Information Officers, to ensure that the retail business community are fully represented within the project teams. As we said, Round Two will be well-served by the experiences and case studies come from Round One, and I think a key point as well is getting the application right at the start in terms of clear expectations, scope, understanding and the required expertise would mitigate some of the challenges that teams found in Round One. Thank you. So, just to conclude on our recommendations, this is a summary of many that will be contained in the report. Improve the monitoring of ERF-funded projects, for example, with bi-monthly progress forms that have been co-designed with the delivery team, and provide support from Business Information Officers required. That recommendation is heavily caveated by the fact that I don't want to give the impression that the previous monitoring was in any way not up to the job, it's just that obviously the next round, an iterative improvement would be those bi-monthly meetings. A toolkit for potential applicants and a guide that could use the examples and lessons from Phase One and Round One to improve clarity and understanding of the requirements, but also to give the applicants opportunity to self-assess their expertise and skills and highlight potential areas of support that they might need. Consider options to continue the efforts to make the application process more inclusive. We suggested, and it came from a stakeholder, that potentially a pitch stage may make it more accessible for certain communities. Continue to increase the diversity of the steering group, to be more reflective of the communities across the ERF, sorry, across Sheffield's communities, and lastly, to explore the potential for a separate fund that would support applicants where there's a lack of capacity, and again, that would just help to ensure that it continues to be accessible. So, thank you for that. I must emphasise, these are obviously emerging findings, and we'd welcome any comments, clarifications and questions. We are obviously at the moment seeking the kind of right of stakeholder reply. We've got an event on this evening as well, where we're, an end-of-product event, where we're going to be capturing some of the thoughts and opinions there that will inform the last stages of our report. Okay, thank you, Chair, thank you, Committee.
Thank you for a clear and concise presentation.
Thank you very much, and just to say, if it's okay to, a big thank you to Pat and the team for a really thoughtful piece of work, and they've really, you know, put a lot of time and effort in really trying to get under the skin of this project because it is so unique, you know, it's not an off-the-shelf product they've given us, they've really thought about how to evaluate this in a fair and robust way, and to do it justice is a turn of phrase they've used quite a lot in conversations we've had, so thank you to the team for all their work. And so with that in mind, I'll talk you through the proposals for Round Two, and we'll take questions at the end, if that's okay. So, move on, please. Just, I suppose, a note on our approach, so obviously we have the benefit now of having these sort of draft findings from the evaluation report, and we've had some in-depth conversations with the steering group and obviously a full briefing with yourselves, and we've taken all of that into account when we're bringing forward the set of proposals that we have. I think just a couple of things to bear in mind, is that in designing this approach, we've really wanted to build on the success we've had, and I think it's clear from the presentation we've just seen, it has been successful despite the challenges, so we want to build on what makes this unique and special, and I think a couple of those things are around collaboration and competition. So, we know that having different stakeholders and partners working together is kind of a little bit of sprinkling of fairy dust about this project really, and it's really important and something we'll definitely build into the new scheme, or retain in Round Two of the scheme. And there's obviously plenty to learn, we're all very aware of that, and we want to make the process a bit more robust in terms of the application stage, but it's really important as well, I think, to maintain as much simplicity as we can, because that really did work for people last year, and leave room as well for the kind of creativity we saw and individual responses and approaches in the different district centre areas. So, there's a bit of balance here, is basically what I'm saying, that's required in designing the next iteration of the scheme. If you can move on, please, thank you. So, the first thing to kind of draw your attention to is, I think, again, responding to what we've learnt from the evaluation is a refocusing of the objectives of the scheme, there were quite slightly more hard-nosed economic objectives in the first round, because it was a completely different context we were working in, it was very much about the kind of Covid recovery, we were responding directly, as the programme was a flagship part of the Business Response Plan, so it very much sat in kind of that world really, but it's clear from the evaluation and having delivered this project that actually a lot of the value is in that kind of community infrastructure and building new relationships with our district centres, so we wanted to reflect that in a refocused and new set of objectives, a bit wordy, they are in draft, and we've purposefully kept them in draft in this report so that we can test them with our stakeholders and finalise those before we go live with the next iteration, so obviously very welcome comments from yourselves on those, when you've time. Move on, please. So, this is kind of the core really of the Economic Recovery Fund Round Two, it's the new budget structure, and there are essentially new lines there that were not in there last year, so last year, the fund was essentially the second line down, the district centre pot, and the last line, the project costs, because obviously with any project of this kind of scale, there are going to be costs you incur on evaluation and staff costs and so forth, but we've built some new lines in this year, and again, they're responding to what we now know and to the council's financial context as well, so the first line is something that came up in a steering group conversation, it's around match funding, so we know there are opportunities out there that the council could be bidding to, but in the current climate, we know that it's really a struggle to find match funding pots, so it was felt that it would be, you know, a good opportunity where it sat within the spirit of the fund and what we're trying to achieve with district centres, to carve out some of this funding to use for that purpose and really lever in additional money for our district centres wherever we can. Obviously, there'll be a point in the process, if you approve this version of the scheme, where we'll need to reassess how much of that is actually used, and where it may not be fully utilised, we'll recycle that back into the rest of the fund. So, the district centre pot then is what you saw last year really, it's what district centres will be able to bid into, and we're retaining the large and small pots really, we thought that worked quite well, so the areas that did have the appetite and capacity can bid for that larger amount, but those who want to start a bit smaller or don't have any particularly large infrastructure elements to their ideas can do that as well, and don't have to feel that they need to really max out what they're bidding for, so we're keeping that element, and it's obviously the largest portion of the fund as well. I suppose one of the salient points about that is that we elected, the steering group rather, elected to, that the four large projects from last year that received grant, Broomhill, Walkley, First Park and Hillsborough, would not be eligible to apply for that again, because they've received a big investment, and again, going back to that balance I was talking about at the beginning, it's very clear councillors want to see the benefit of this fund extended into new and different areas, so that's one of the proposals that I think it's important to be clear that we've made here. However, we do want to leave the door open for those large projects who have achieved so much, you know, in the past year, so they'll be eligible to apply for the flexible use pot, only up to a small project amount, they will be competing with other ideas as well, because the purpose of that fund, that part of the fund is to look at new ideas, things that may be over multiple district centres or citywide, or for a hard-hit sector, stuff that maybe doesn't sit as comfortably in the line of bus really, so that's where they will be aiming at and pitching to. I think something that's, I think, a really important change to ERF Round Two is, I think, responding to this idea that it's really hard for those areas to come forward and access this fund where they don't already have the infrastructure and capacity in their area to do so, and our attempt to kind of mitigate for that is creating a capacity-building fund that they can use. I think the details are still to be decided, whether that's just central capacity that we send out into the communities and people draw on as and when they need to, or whether it's a bit of both and they can bid in for actual cash that they use locally for someone with the relevant skills and experience, that has to be decided, I think, but the purpose is to level the playing field as much as we can for people who want to come forward and work with us. Thank you. So, just, I won't labour these points, because they're all in the report, but we will make some changes to the process and governance of the fund in Round Two, or have proposed that we will. So, for example, on eligibility, I think, again, we'll keep what worked, we kept it really broad and open, and I think a different mix of people and applicants came forward in Round One that we want to see kept pretty free and open for Round Two as well. For applications, we will have a single closing date, I think, for small applications, as opposed to keeping that on a rolling basis, because, again, going back to the competitive element of the process, we want the best ideas to kind of come through. We do want to make this an easier process for people to come forward and participate in, so we'll be developing a toolkit based on all of the models and examples that we've seen in the past year, that people will be able to hopefully be fairly visual and interactive on the website, and hopefully that will give them just a basis and an understanding of the kinds of things they can deliver in their areas if they want to, or something completely new as well. We'll not really make changes to the scoring process, but again, responding to the evaluation, we really do think the potential for a pitch stage might be quite helpful if it's approachable and easy for people to do, so that's something we'll definitely look at doing. I know that the contracting process took a bit too long last time, so part of the reasoning for asking for more information in the application period is to make that contracting phase easier to manage with them. There will be also a bit of setting expectations with any public sector process, it's not going to be click your fingers overnight and it's done, there'll be, you know, there'll be a process to go through with our projects, but hopefully it'll be easier to manage next year. There are a couple of changes that we're looking to make in terms of governance are around the steering group, so again, in an effort to learn from last year, to use all of the skills and experience that our Round One projects had, we'll be asking them for volunteers to sit on the steering group and opening two places, I think, for them to do so, I think that'll bring a really new set of perspectives, hopefully it'll increase the diversity of the group as well, and I think it'll be really, probably a really positive perspective to bring around the table and participate in those discussions, and again, importantly, in terms of making sure those people feel included, the Chair and myself will make sure they feel supported in that as well, which I think is important. Thank you. Obviously, we've considered alternate options, many of which you've raised in this committee meeting previously with your questions, I won't labour these now, but we did consider them as viable alternatives, but ultimately, I think it was felt that they may change the model too much essentially, and again, it was a bit of a why-if-it's-not-broke, you know, don't try and fix it thing, but more than happy to talk through the rationale for that if you're wanting to do that. So, I think that's all I was going to say, except mentioning the timeline for launching the new fund, thank you. And of course, there'll be a bit of an establishment process, myself and colleagues will have to go away and really write the detail, create the toolkit, which again, won't happen overnight, but will be as quick as we can. I think realistically looking to launch in the new year, because we know from much experience of working for businesses, Christmas is an extremely busy time for them, they will not be ready and willing to look at anything we put out into the public domain until, I think, the new year, so that's the kind of draft launch date we've suggested to you, and obviously then we'll be collaborating with them to put their applications forward, contracting and delivery, and hoping to complete delivery for this round of funding around October 2024, to make sure we get, really maximise the value, I think, and give people time to deliver, get two summers of delivery out of these projects where possible really. So, I hope that's okay as a summary, probably spoken a bit too long, but obviously welcome your questions to the Cada team or myself.
Thank you, Sarah, very clear presentation. So, colleagues, questions, comments? I've got Councillor Masters and then Councillor Notte.
Thank you for the excellent presentations from all of you. I mean, it's clarity we look after. We have some really good ideas for the plan across district, there's a lot of uncertainties facing them as well at the moment, so any help, we'll be grateful, but we want them to take place round about the Easter time, and the timetable doesn't allow for this to happen, so is there support from other sources? That's the first question. And the second one is sort of, again, it, these businesses are mostly independent, they're used to working independently, obviously, so can you clarify, there's no existing trade group, which there isn't at the moment, which can apply for the grant, can you, can any business accept it on behalf of traders or an event, but are there any tax implications? Because I've heard varying reports about that, and I'd just like some clarity. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, I'll perhaps take the second question first, so in terms of who can receive the funding, we'd, certainly in the previous iteration of the scheme, we'd... So in terms of who can receive the funding, we'd, certainly in the previous iteration of the scheme, we'd preferred a third party to handle the finances and of course, if a fee was required, we'd be happy to build that into the project costs. We did on occasion allow an individual business to take on the funding and in that case, there weren't tax implications, but each individual business, I think, would have to assess that themselves using their own financial advisers. It's not something that I would have the expertise to advise on. They'd have to take that into account really.
No, that was the thing, is it classed as income if one business applies for it or is it classed as something else?
It's grant funding, but how each individual business would apply that, I don't know.
I think it depends what else is running through that business and what that business is. So it's best probably if we have a direct conversation with the businesses who are likely to do it through Business Sheffield and then we can help advise on that because it's not clear cut unfortunately.
No, it isn't clearly, thank you.
Yes, they're happy to do that. In terms of the sources of support, it depends what the activity is that you're looking to do. We have got the business information officers that could be a first line of support. So if you're not connected into them, I suggest that would be a first way of doing so. And we also encourage people in Round One to start to set up collaborations and business forums. So it might be that that's another way of doing this and looking towards that as well, which again, our Business Sheffield and Information Officers team can help do that. So happy to connect you up with that afterwards.
No, we've done that and had a work, you know, this is what we've devised with the business information officers. But like everything, it's the funding and the timescale and knowing when's the best time for this, which would be round about Easter for the first initiative. The others, they can sort of be on the back burner for a short time. Okay, thank you.
Have to have a look at what it is then and then they might be able to give some tips around.
I'll have a word later.
Yeah, thank you.
I think there's a second part to your question, wasn't there councillor Masters, about Easter?
That, yes, that was it, they've both been covered, sort of one about sort of the tax implications and one about the timetable, whether there are the pots of money available. And you're saying, depends on both.
See, apologies, councillor Notte. Firstly, thanks again for another sort of very informative presentation and the work you've been doing with ERF Stage One. You mentioned that the areas that received the largest slice of funding during Stage One won't be able to receive the same slice of funding and that because we want to spread it out further into the community and make sure that this is a tide that raises all ships. The projects that received the largest slice of funding did develop a lot of expertise and it would be good to capitalise on that. You have mentioned in the report that you're going to continue to promote the use of paid project management. Can we encourage some of the delivery partners that receive the larger funding to reach out into communities that weren't willing to form the organisations so that we can keep that ball rolling and spread it out? Or is there going to be any exclusion on who actually delivers?
That's really helpful, thank you. And if I've understood right as well, in terms of creating a kind of, if you like, ERF delivery network, that's something I've kind of been thinking about because in the context of bringing everyone together today for a celebration event halfway through the project, I did kind of question myself as to why we hadn't done that before because it is the first time people will have been in a room together. And you're absolutely right that there'll be an enormous amount of value in doing that, I think, they'll learn an awful lot from each other. But I think we can do that on a more regular basis and allow people to share the, you know, the learning that they're having in delivering their projects, not only between themselves but with those who are delivering newly in the next year as well.
I think on the programme management question, it's been the projects themselves have decided how to do that project management. So I don't think we would exclude a project manager from one area of the city from working in another. But we wouldn't dictate it either, actually I think it's a really good idea for those who have built the skill set to support other projects. So if the project in a different area of the city wanted to use their expertise and cost it within their bid, that would be perfectly allowable as far as I'm aware.
Okay, thanks a lot for clarifying that.
I'd also say that we will be, I think, in having discussions with prospective applicants, we will be encouraging people even more strongly than we did last year to pay for that kind of capacity and expertise and time into their projects because I think in many cases it has paid dividends and those who are doing it voluntarily are literally doing it in their spare time after family dinners and all the rest of it, which is a strain. And it's difficult and it sometimes can be slower as well, which is challenging for them. So I think having paid project managers in place, particularly in the larger areas, is something we'd encourage for next year.
We have made a recommendation to that effect, but we will just reflect on it in light of your comments to ensure that the capacity isn't in there to do that.
Thank you, Simon.
Thank you Chair and thank you very much for the work that you've been doing, consulting on this. I'm a Chair of one of the local area committees and you came to us and talked to us and I can see from that discussions and other discussions of, I think I'll be involved in this about three different points, how it's evolved and how we got here. And as I say, Chair of the South Lack, we've actually started to kind of start laying the groundwork for this ourselves, working with with the business advisers and I know my colleagues and some of my couch colleagues and the staff in the lack along with the business adviser, have actually planned to go out already to to some of our local shopping areas that we know missed out last time. So I mean, I suppose I've got a few questions in terms of helping me along with that conversation I'm going to be having. So I'm wondering what the kind of minimum useful amount is. So it's turned up to fifty grand, but kind of having seen the projects, I'm wondering, you know, how much do you kind of, you know, what's the minimum you kind of got to shoot for? So we have an idea of perhaps, you know, what the minimum is as it were. You know, when we're going out and talking to traders, I'm wondering if you can kind of give us a bit of advice as to, you know, what we need to be talking about. And I'd say on the third thing, I suppose, is just really comment about the capacity. So I mean, that to me is going to be the problem, you know, what we'd like to see is, you know, great designs coming through super quickly to deliver these things. And I'd say I think providing that expertise, you know, architects, project management, kind of, you know, having it on a tap, I think, to some degree, so that, you know, people can have these ideas and hopefully talk to somebody, you know, who can move them on a bit without kind of having to go through a council getting it arranged. If it's kind of there, then hopefully, you know, so we can perhaps buy this kind of thing behind the yard. And, you know, as I say, maybe those projects won't go anywhere, but at least we can kind of get that input right at the beginning to say, you know, what isn't likely and so get an estimate cost. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much councillor. Just in terms of the minimum funding amount, which I think was your first point, last year we really encouraged people to maximise, you know, up to the max value that you could bid for. So get up to that fifty K or get up to the two hundred K. And honestly, I really don't think we'll be doing that this year. I think we should be encouraging people to bid for what they need. And actually, if you want to do a whole load of community events, you probably don't need fifty thousand pounds to do that. So I think it should be, the budget should be built around what they want to deliver. So it could be three K, it could be fifteen or forty five. From my perspective, I think the ideas will stand on their merits in terms of the scoring and I don't think there'll be any difference made in terms of what the amount is being asked for.
On that though, I think we have got a set of costs now that we didn't have before. So how much it costs to put banners up, how much it costs on average to put a community event. So it's probably sharing information to help people put bids together is something that we could do. I think that's practical.
And that's part of what we're intending to do with the toolkit. So all of that information that we've learned from the past year, the pain of having to understand whether we can put up hanging baskets and how much they are, everything that we've learned, painful and otherwise, will be, I think, in that document and a resource for people. In terms of a steer as to how to talk to communities, I think, just to use the last year as a guide, you know, we've got a really good summary document of what projects last year delivered. And, you know, it's not exhaustive as well if you've got new and different ideas that you want to pilot and try in your area. I think we're absolutely loved to hear about them and support you in developing those ideas. I was talking to a third sector organisation just earlier this week about community ownership of assets. No one came forward to that idea last year, but I want to be ready with the information in case people do this year. So where you have ideas that maybe we haven't dealt with before, please just come and talk to us about them, we'll support you. In terms of the capacity, I think it's a really important point about the expertise and again, that's something we've reflected, you know, on over the past year. I would say though as well that it's not just the expertise, it's the time. And building these relationships really does take time and I don't, I think, you know, in terms of the timescales we've suggested for this year, we've made the application period a lot longer than it was last year and that's probably still ambitious. So I think I would, you know, just urge caution on that level as well. It may take longer than you expect. If that's okay.
Thank you very much indeed and I look forward to getting involved.
Yes, I just wanted to pick up the point you made about some of the interventions as well. One of the things that came across very strongly, speaking with stakeholders, is that an iterative improvement would definitely be, I thought was about a menu of potential interventions. But what was also very clear and just to reiterate what Sarah was saying, that having an open option has to be retained in order to maintain that creative and autonomous approach. So I suppose it's getting that balance right between a kind of off the shelf set of things that can be delivered, but always having that scope for creativity. Thank you councillor.
Thanks Chair and thank you for the presentations and thank you for the work that has gone in from the officers to make this scheme a success. I represent Walkley, which was one of the largest district centres, Walkley and Upper Thork, which had, you know, one of the larger pots of funding. And I think what's helped make that scheme a success is the fact that it was business led. And so I really welcome the fact that this is, you know, designed again to be business led. And that feels like a really important principle, more so almost now as we're going into twenty twenty three than we did in twenty twenty one, because the challenges facing our high streets and our businesses are greater now than they were back then. So my question is more of an ask, which is can we be as expansive as possible in what the council will be able to support businesses with if that's what they come forward with? And I welcome the idea that we are going to have a menu to stimulate some discussion. But if there are things that are off menu, then I think that's going to be really, really important, that we're as flexible and as expansive in our kind of approach as a council to work with businesses to make future rounds of this as successful as the first.
Yes, absolutely, yes, that's built in. And I think the one thing I would say in the eligibility was that collaboration is key. So we didn't take any schemes forward that were to the benefit of a single business. It was always around that high street or an agglomeration of businesses working together and to the benefit of the community. So that's the hard line really. I think anything outside of that, we're willing to listen to and try and be as flexible as we can to help them deliver.
Questions coming in thick and fast, I think. Manesh, you've got first and then Paul and then I'll take Chair's prerogative with a comment after that.
Thank you Chair and thank you so much for the report and the work. I think to echo everyone else, it's been really fantastic to see. I think, you know, that figure of one pound ninety nine for every one pound spent, it really speaks to the success of the first round. And obviously we know there'll be so many non-economic wider benefits too, I think. More of a comment than a question, but it's really welcome to see the report speak to the steering group being able to monitor applications based on indices of multiple deprivation and giving the steering group scope to intervene as well as if areas of deprivation aren't well represented, as well as the creation of the community capacity fund. I know I mentioned both of those previously and it's, I think it's really, really helps demonstrate the commitment of making the fund accessible in the next round going on, so it's really, really nice to see. Just as a comment as well, I really like the refocused objectives, which, you know, is speaking to building the foundations for economic renewal and leaving a lasting legacy of community infrastructure, I think is really welcome, but it speaks also to that longer term approach we should be taking, you know, really it depends to me that this is a really innovative and welcome approach to supporting our high streets. So yeah, just thank you so much.
Thanks. Yeah, I don't really have any questions and, you know, very deeply involved in the ERF One and was honoured to chair the steering group last year. And it was an absolute delight to work with Sarah and Diane and Dianette and the whole team, just a brilliant bunch of people. I thought the whole project was just really excellent and really revolutionary for, particularly for Sheffield City Council, where we really respected the expertise of the local people and really capitalised on the creativity and innovation of our local businesses. They're putting collaboration at the heart of it. Just really good and thinking about the legacy and as Manesh said, you know, they're getting that return of, you know, kind of doubling your value in pounds, but not just that, you know, having these new business forums that are there. And I guess it's that whole idea of of legacy and ongoing resilience for our businesses. And we know it's difficult climate, it was difficult during Covid, it's difficult during the cost of living crisis and doing what we can to arm them and I guess that phrase of don't give someone a fish, teach them how to fish just is really appropriate to this, I think. Slightly lost my train of thoughts, but yeah, I'm just really looking forward to it to next year. I love the idea of having a pitch stage, I think it should be made as easy and accessible for people to come into the fund and apply for money to improve their areas. And the idea of where if there was a weakness in the ERF One, it was that it was more accessible to areas that had an existing community and to acknowledge that the value of that business community to that area and what we can do to build that business community in other areas where it's less powerful. Just, yeah, really looking forward to carrying on and really looking forward to getting the money out again next year and seeing what inventive ideas come forward. And yeah, thanks very much to everybody and thanks very much, I said it before and I'll say it again. I know Diana, you are excellent and you've been like, you've led this team brilliantly. But Sarah is like the one, if there is one person in this massive amount of people who've worked in this project in one way or another, Sarah is far and away the one who has done the most. And without her skills and hard work, it just wouldn't have been this good, so thanks very much.
Thanks very much, I'd obviously share that though with all of my colleagues and particularly the business information officers, without whom really, really wouldn't have happened in many areas, I think. So thank you very much for the kind comments. Completely echo what you say though about making the pitch stage accessible to people. I'm very aware that that could be really intimidating to some people, particularly if it is in person. So we're going to really think that through, literally from the design of the room, if it is in person. And if not, if it's just, you know, digital, how we make that accessible to people who may not, you know, normally use that. So we will think that through.
We could actually go out to them.
Well, exactly.
Let them pitch in their areas, show them what they want, show us what they want to do.
Exactly. And I think in terms of the legacy, you're absolutely right that we, you know, we've thought about this from the beginning and we're getting to the stage now where we really do have to put a plan together because we're nearing the last sort of three, four months of the scheme now for the first round of projects. So that's something that, you know, I just emailed some of the larger projects today to reiterate that commitment and we will make sure there's some kind of a plan to retain the really brilliant relationships that we've built with these district centres over the past year.
Thank you and just a couple of quick final comments from me. So the ward that I represent, we had a successful project, it was the smallest one in the city by value. And I just want to say that we should never underestimate the impact that even a really small project could have. Local traders in Tuckley didn't ask for much, but we were able to support them and that gave them if not an economic boost, but just an emotional, a morale boost. The council had their back, they asked for something and they got it. And that did an enormous amount of good that was disproportionate to the amount of money that was spent. So as a ward councillor, thank you very much for that. And I want to thank Calder that you guys have done this independent bit of research for us, looking at what happened and getting that third party perspective on what worked and what didn't work has helped us improve the proposals for Phase Two, so that's also very much appreciated. So if there are no further questions colleagues, we have a number of recommendations which are on page seventeen of the pack and I'll just read them out. So it is recommended that the committee, point one, welcomes and notes the findings of the ERF evaluation. Two, supports the establishment of Economic Recovery Fund Round Two as proposed in this report. And three, notes that decisions on funding approval And three, notes that decisions on funding approvals over fifty thousand pounds will now need to be taken by the Strategy and Resources Committee. Those under fifty thousand pounds will be taken in line with the existing delegated authority by the Director for Economic Development, Culture and Skills in consultation with the E R F steering group. So those are the recommendations. Are we agreed? I'm taking nods of head. Anybody disagree? In that case, it's a unanimous agreement that we should proceed with this. Thank you very much. So the recommendation is agreed. And as far as I'm aware, unless there's anything else, that concludes the business of the committee this afternoon. Thanks to everybody for their participation and support. Thank you.